Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order this city council meeting. The date today is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and it is 5:15 PM. This is going to be a special study session that we're starting off with, and I will read some introductory remarks to begin with. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to newly enacted Assembly Bill 361. The city is previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus, which expired on September 30th. This new bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1st, 2024, as long as California is under a governor-declared state of emergency. In order to continue meeting subject to this exemption of the Brown Act, the city council must make the following findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption, and every 30 days thereafter. The first point is that the legislative body has reconsidered the circumstances of the state of emergency, and either one, the state of emergency continues to directly impact the ability of members to meet safely in person, or two, state and local officials continue to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing. The city council, successor agency, and Mesa Board will consider whether to make these findings at their respective November 2nd, 2021, regular meetings, and at meetings at least every 30 days thereafter, until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours now, between 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and please check the website for planning and building counter-special hours or to make an appointment. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and may provide public comment during the meeting using the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification and on social media. At this time, I will turn things over to our clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here. Now, we will consider approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second on the agenda?
To move.
I'll take the motion from Member Medina and a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And does anyone have any expertise communications to report for this study session? No? Oh, just me. I met with representatives of Longfellow in June in that very brief point in time where we thought that we'd be getting rid of masks indoors at restaurants. And that's my report. That will bring us to public comment for items not on the agenda. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have no online comment cards, and I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Very good. I will go ahead and close public comment. And that will bring us to our study session, and I will cede the floor to our staff to go ahead and begin the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Sherry, could you please bring up the presentation? So this is a new redevelopment project at 1650 65th Street.
One moment. Let me get it on the correct screen. All right. And everybody, let me know when you can see it all right.
Okay.
I can see it, but there we go. That's the proper proportion. Thank you, Sherry.
All right.
Okay. So what you are saying is the project site is about a little over seven acre in size. Next slide, please. And it collects three parcels, which are occupied by atrium building and two buildings, and two parcels where the expressions college are there. All the buildings will be demolished in order to accommodate this new project. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan. The new project involves three new buildings. One is residential and two are life science buildings. So just to get you oriented, at the bottom of the screen is 65th Street, and on your right side is Shellmount Street. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there are two buildings, which will be life science or research and development buildings, and they total about 750,000 square feet, and one residential building accommodating 144 units. All three buildings are over 150 feet tall. The residential stands at 185 feet, and the two life science buildings are little over 200 feet. Next slide, please. So these is the basic circulation plan. As you can see, there are two vehicular entrances along the Shellmount site and one along 65th Street. Next slide, please. So this is a rendering of the aerial perspective. I am not going to be showing too many of these in order to minimize duplication, as the applicant also has an extensive presentation with various massings from different points of view. Next slide, please. The key to note here is that as part of the proposal, they are going to be including a public park, which is a little over an acre, as well as a bike path along the western perimeter of their property. And in addition to that, there will be residential amenities on the rooftop, as well as the podium, and then there will be the amenities for the employees of the two life science buildings on the podium as well. And you can see the numbers on your screen. Next slide, please. So the general plan designation is MUR, mixed use with residential, which allows a variety of non-residential uses, including offices, retail, and hotels, and of course, residential. And on larger sites, a mix of residential and non-residential uses is required. So the project is consistent by proposing office and R&amp;D, as well as residential use. Next slide, please. The general plan also designates on this location other park opportunity site, and this is implemented through Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, which calls for half an acre public park at this location. They are proposing 1.17 acre public park, and in addition, they are also proposing bicycle and pedestrian path along the western perimeter, and that's about a little over half an acre. Next slide, please. So the proposal, so in terms of the planning regulations, the base zone is mixed use with residential, which also allows a variety of office and commercial uses, as well as residential uses. On sites five acres or more, this zoning district requires a mix of uses, one of which must be residential. The exact mix is not specified in our regulation and is to be determined by the Planning Commission and the city council. They are proposing office and life science uses, and they are proposing 144 residential units as the two major uses. Next slide, please. As this site is graded in five acres, a little over seven acres, the development proposal must be approved through a PUD or Planned Unit Development Process. The PUD is a two-step process, first consisting of a PDP, followed by one or more final development plans. Specific findings need to be made both for PDP approval as well as for the FDP approval. The council will be involved in approval of the PDP upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. However, the FDP would come to the council only if the Planning Commission decision is appealed. Next slide, please. So these are the seven findings that need to be made in order to approve this PUD/PDP. And I'm not going to read them through, but essentially, they need to be consistent with the general plan and be cohesive and integrated to the neighborhood community. The various design and operating characteristics should work with the vicinity and the capacity of the vicinity, and the aesthetic quality should be of a high level. Next slide, please. So let's walk through the various planning regulations standards in terms of residential density. As you know, there is a buy right and buy bonus. So in this site, 70 units per acre is allowed by right, and 135 units per acre is allowed with a bonus. What they are proposing is 20 units per acre, so that would be allowed by right. Next slide, please. FAR, this site is on 3.0 by right and 6.0 with bonus. What they are proposing is 3.0, which is also allowed by right. Next slide, please. So the height, the base height is 75 feet, and with bonus, 100 plus, any height over 100 is allowed. As all three buildings above 100 feet, the project will require the full 100 bonus points. Next slide, please. So how are they going to obtain the bonus points? The first half, the 50 points, will be obtained by providing affordable units, and that's 17% of the total, which is 144. So that calculates to 24 affordable units, and you can read the different income levels at which each unit will come. In addition to that, as they are also proposing commercial uses, the applicant will need to pay increased or double the affordable housing impact fee for the non-residential component of the project. And at today's impact fees, this calculates for this project to be $7.2 million. As far as the remaining 50 points that need to be obtained through community benefits, these have not yet been identified by the applicant. Next slide, please. Parking, for commercial vehicular parking, what they are permitted is 0 to 1,602 spaces. They are proposing 1,497 spaces. So they comply with a requirement. In terms of residential parking, what is allowed is 0 to 190 spaces, and they are proposing 144 spaces. So they comply with our regulations. Next slide, please. In terms of bicycle parking, commercial, what is required is 146 long-term and 146 short-term. And for the residential bicycle parking, 144 long-term is required in addition to 14 short-term bicycle spaces. The applicant is going to be providing this, but at this preliminary stage, they have not identified the locations and the actual number, but they are very well aware of what is required from them. Next slide, please. In terms of open space, so this is separate from the public park designation. This is required for the use itself. So for the commercial uses, what is required is about a total of 44,960 square feet, and they're providing a little over that. There are some more details regarding focus or the privately-owned public open space, which they will figure out as the design of the project develops. Next slide, please. Residential open space users, they are required a little under 6,000 square feet of private open space and about a little under 3,000 square feet of common open space. They are providing about little over 11,000 square feet of common open space. At this time, the private open space has not been identified. It's a little early in the design phase. Next slide, please. In terms of staff comments, the project was reviewed in June. There was such a suggestion of consolidating all driveways along Shellmount Street. It was noted that the loading information would need to be provided for all three buildings. There was also suggestion to switch the location of the park with residential towers so that the tower could take advantage of the views while providing some protection from wind and noise for the park users. It was noted that the phasing plan has not yet been submitted, and it was suggested that the residential building be constructed before commercial buildings. Next slide, please. The Parks and Recreation Committee reviewed the project on September 15th. The committee generally liked the park proposal, though a concern was expressed regarding its adjacency to the freeway, though they did note that from the sun exposure viewpoint, the location was appropriate. Some of the ideas for the park programming included nature play area, fitness courts, amphitheater with a stage, dog park for larger dogs, and bicycle training area for children. The committee also liked the idea of the retail kiosk, and you'll see more of this in the applicant's presentation. And they suggested including a restroom in the park area. Next slide, please. The project went to BPAC on September 20th. The committee stated that the transportation analysis that would be done as part of the sequel analysis should closely look at the potential intermodal conflicts between cars, bicycles, and pedestrians along 65th and Shellmount Streets. The committee also stated that the park be programmed for multi-generational users and also include a restroom. The committee also suggested a decomposed granite path for joggers and seating for pedestrians along the bike path along the western perimeter. Next slide, please. Two public comments were made at the BPAC meeting. One, the Bike Eastway representative noted that onsite paths, any onsite paths, should be oriented towards bicycle parking so as to encourage employees coming to the site by bike. And resident had questions for the applicant regarding whether they were familiar with the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan and whether they were in support of bicycle boulevards. Next slide, please. A community meeting was held by the applicant who I assume on September 29th. Three residents spoke at the meeting. Concerns were expressed regarding increased traffic congestion. One comment was made that the park should have some connection with the heritage of the city, and another comment was made regarding the need to have residential units that accommodated families. Next slide, please. So these are some of the questions that would guide you to give your input to staff and the applicant. And one is regarding the mix of users. As I mentioned, this project is required to have a mix of users, of which at least one use needs to be residential. But the actual degree of what mix is not specified. So we would like to know whether the council believes that the mix of users that is being proposed is appropriate for this site. What does, I'm sorry, they all say commission, they should really be saying council, but what does the council think about the location of the public park and the three towers and the proposed circulation for the site? Does the council have any preferences as to how the bonus points may be obtained at this early stage? And then generally, any comments on the design itself? And does the council feel that the findings for the PUD and PDP can be made at this stage? So that concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, the applicant does have a presentation for you as well.
Very good. Thank you, Maru.
And, Maru, I have Brian allowed to speak, and I think you also said Rob Williamson and Peter Fritz. Is that correct?
That is correct, Sherry.
Okay. So I've got them allowed to speak, and let me go and get their presentation. One moment, please. And can everyone see that?
Yep. Looks good.
All right. We're ready for the presenters. If you want to unmute yourself.
All right. Great. Well, so, good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Yenchuk from HOK. Just quick, technical. Right now, I can only unmute. I don't have a video option. That's perfectly fine with me. But if you, I guess, like to see me, I need to be given that, right? Otherwise, we're fine with voice only. So it's up to you.
Yes, we've allowed voice only.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to check. I didn't want to be rude. Okay. And then if you've unmuted Peter Fritz, he will kick us off.
He should be able to unmute himself.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I just got the pop-up in me myself. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Appreciate the time this evening. We are very excited to present our preliminary plans for 1650 65th Street, known as the atrium, and 6601 and 6603 Shellmount, known as the B-trium, into a redeveloped live-work-play environment, which we're really excited about. My name is Peter Fritz. I'm Senior Director of Development for Longfellow. I'm joined this evening with my colleagues Jennifer Kane and Alex Campomani, as well as HOK, who is our architect and master planner with Brian and Rob. Next slide, please. A little bit about Longfellow. We are a life-science-focused investor, developer, and operator, and we are focused on creating space to promote innovation and life-science research and development. Based off of that, we're in the key innovation markets in the United States of Boston, New York City, Durham, San Diego, and of course, here in the Bay Area. We have a portfolio of approximately 12 million square feet, including existing product and our development pipeline. And to give you a quick overview of our history on the site, we acquired it in May of this year. It was currently ongoing a conversion from warehouse and office space to life science. And we engaged with Maru and team early in the process to explore the feasibility of creating a larger, more vibrant life-science and residential campus at this location. And as Maru had outlined, had a Planning Commission study session, as well as talked to Bike and Ped into the Parks Department, and we're excited to present some preliminary ideas to you this evening and to get your feedback. If you go to the next slide, please, to give you a quick overview of the Longfellow portfolio and how this site fits in. We span from Palo Alto up to San Francisco, along the peninsula, and we have been working for quite some time to break into the emeryville market. It's been absolute priority of ours, as we believe so strongly in Emeryville as a city and as not only established, but very quickly a growing life-science market. It's important to note that we are a long-term holder of our properties, and we are committed to our campuses, our tenants, and the cities and communities which we operate in for the long term. And we are excited, regardless of whether the project gets converted in its existing condition or ultimately redeveloped, we're excited and committed to the campus and to the city of Emeryville. Next slide, please. I'm just quickly touching again on some of our in-house capabilities. We are fully integrated, vertically integrated, meaning that we have the team and experience to design, develop, and operate a campus of this magnitude, inclusive of the residential component and the public park, and really activate that through constant programming and to encourage interaction between the different uses onsite and in the neighborhood. And quickly to touch on one project, which highlights that on the next slide, is a project in Durham, North Carolina, known as the Durham ID. And we bring this up to just quickly highlight a comparable project that's in a similar urban core and how we brought in a mix of uses from retail and hospitality, and of course, life-science to create an innovative district that's really been a model for us that we look to bring to the city here on the West Coast. And with that, I will hand it over to Brian Yenchuk with HOK to walk through our initial concept of the campus.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening, councilmembers. You know, it's funny, I'm going to probably talk using my hands, even though there's no video, and I'm just sort of here in my basement presenting to you. I do want to express, though, even though you can't see me, how excited Peter and I and the entire Longfellow and HOK team are about this project. I'd love to walk you through the project, share some more visuals, as Maru mentioned, to help you better understand the proposal, make sure that the place-making opportunities, that the benefits, and that the overall vision are clear, and then answer any questions you may have. So we're going to start with project understanding. On the next slide, we are tremendously committed to the community and to the city. We know how important this project is here at the northern edge of Emeryville. And in order to ensure that we're fitting within the city's vision, we start with the general plan. And so as we make decisions about where open space should be positioned, where are our driveways and curb cuts? How do vehicles or service work? How do we place and position the active storefronts and facades of our buildings? We start here. So we began at the broader scale. We know that this is about creating distinct districts with a highly livable neighborhoods. And we know that public realm, active streetscape, bike and pedestrian improvements, these are really key to having livable neighborhoods. So this becomes our focus. What you see on the screen is our property here, about 7.3 acres, surrounded by the red line. The pink is the proposed bike and pedestrian bridge that goes over the interstate, over to Point Emery Park, and then the Bay Trail beyond. This immediately gives us a cue as one of our roles, you know, in the broader citizenry of the city, is to make sure that that future open space connection lands comfortably along 65th onto our property. And you'll see how we factor that into the project. If we go to the next slide, we then thought a lot about how do we connect? We know that it's critical to Emeryville that there's a diverse transportation network. This is what makes Emeryville such an amazing place to bring your business, to grow your business, to grow your family, and to live in general. We've organized our project a lot around the Emery Go Round, connections to Amtrak, certainly connections to Bard, as well as bike and pet improvements. We want to make sure that every single mode of transportation and circulation is possible here. Our site, you know, is in a really critical point of the city along the northern waterfront, and we want to make sure that we're connected deeply back into the city in all directions. That's circulation. Let's roll on to the next slide. I don't know how much time, you know, you all spend kind of walking around this site, so we thought it'd be helpful to bring in some photos. I'll go through these quickly, and we can go back during Q&amp;A. So these are the three parcels that Maru and Peter mentioned. I'll just call out a couple of things. We do, you know, as you look down Christie Avenue, which is Emmett Photograph Number One, we think it's really important that as you look north all the way up Christie, that you don't just look at the wall of a building. That should be an open space. That should be void. That should invite you in. That really struck us from the beginning. The other one, maybe slide number eight, I know it doesn't look like a whole lot, but that's the Ashby Avenue exit. And as you pull off of the interstate, you're actually on a berm, a hillock that rises. This is actually important because the interstate's peeling away from our site. That mound actually gives us wind protection. It gives us a little noise abatement. There's also some mature trees there. So we've been looking for every little cue that the site gives us on how it should be developed. On the next slide, we then begin to draw and design. And one of the first things that we started with is how does our project connect to the broader city fabric, you know, to our community here? Along Shellmount, we've got our green street, again, bicycle boulevard with pedestrian improvements. We touch it along our northern front edge. We've got a chance to help upgrade that streetscape. And then really, I think one of the really huge improvements that this project will bring will be the improvement of 65th Street. You know, after you cross over the tracks, there's not a lot to that road. We want to bring in bicycle improvements. We want to make sure that transit is welcomed in, and that it really feels like a green street. On the next slide, you can see how those circulation connections then come into the site. So now we're off of city streets, and we're into the property. One of the goals of the city, we know, is to have a bike path shown in the green arrow that goes along the that goes along the Ashby Avenue exit, along the western edge of the property. It connects up to the biking path that's already been proposed for the residential development, just to our north, and ultimately will connect you all the way from 65th over to Shell Mount, as well as up and over the pedestrian bridge. This is really important. We think this is where a public park needs to be anchored. It realizes the city's vision for connectivity. It really creates a wonderful stepping stone along 65th as you're continuing your journey one day over the pedestrian bridge, over to the Bay Trail, and along your waterfront. And then the greenway gives you a choice. Maybe you don't want to go down 65th. Maybe you want to go over to Ashby or up to Shell Mount. Well, now you can, you know, because of this project. As you know, right now, this, this, this site can't really be circulated. So this is all about bringing ferocity. I'll draw your attention, as Maru mentioned, to the little numbers in the lower left, which hopefully you can read. If you can't, we've more than doubled the public park requirement onto this site. This is how we're achieving our bonus points, and it really also underscores the importance of open space and public realm. For Longfellow, our commitment to the city, that public park is significant in scale. At 51,000, it's well over an acre. It could become a tremendous part of our city's fabric of open spaces. And we've got some exciting ideas for what can happen there as well. It's a really green project. Now we turn on some buildings and some roads. So now that we understand where and how we want to connect, where open space should be located, now let's think about their relationship to buildings. You're, you're seeing as a bird flies, just kind of top-down. You're seeing on the left the yellow Future Pedestrian Bike-Ped Bridge zooming over the, over the freeway. The cyan line showing how it kind of swoops down to 65th. Right there, again, a park reaching out like a big catcher's mitt to receive wherever that bridge and ramp comes down and lands. We want to make sure that that park is flexible so that it can receive that important piece of infrastructure in the future. This meant that the residential building, shown in yellow, the lower right-hand corner on your slide, it needed to move east. And this does a couple of really important things. One, it ensures the public park, as Maru mentioned, as well as the Bike and Pet Committee noted, it keeps the park in the sun. As you know, it's really important to have protection from the wind, and you know, your, your back and your face in the sun. That's what makes open spaces so lovely in Emeryville. If you have those two things, you can actually be very comfortable even in the windy afternoons. So keeping our park in the sun was key. This move also means that the buildings, when the winter sun swings around the left side of this page and slightly up, you know, to kind of the upper, upper, right, upper-left corner, this means that our buildings aren't casting shade onto the surrounding buildings and residents to our south. This is really key. We position these buildings so that we would have the absolute least impact on the surrounding buildings. This meant that the lab buildings needed to go to the north, and then they have their podium for parking. Last thing I'll note is in red, you can see our, our onsite circulation. We have very long driveways allowing us to pull cars off of Shell Mount and 65th and let them queue on our property and not back up city streets. So that's the site plan. We'll show you some 3D. Great. Next up, so this is circulation. P means parking, S means service. And so you can see how the lab buildings and the podium that they sit upon are served and parked from both their north and south sides. The traffic engineers we're working with, who are excellent, said really the key is let's get our driveways away from the Shell Mount and 65th intersection. We know how clogged that can get, especially when there's trains. Pull those driveways away. The other was to continue Christie Ave into our property in the form of a driveway. Again, back to the, let's not have a wall or a building there. Let's actually invite the view in. And that's where we're of course gonna, we have some really amazing park ideas. There's also a fire lane around the back, to the left. Let's keep rolling. So that's the site circulation. Service, often it's a question, especially with these amazing innovation life-science projects, how do the trucks come in and out? We thought that should happen really in the center of the site, allowing the edges of the site to be for the public. What we don't want is a lot of service along our streetscapes, right? Our streetscapes are for people. They're for bicycles. They're for all the things. But they're not for big service trucks. Simple driveway coming in, you come into service, you turn around and you leave. So that's the service. And now the building. Maru actually walked through this frankly, I think, better than I could, so I'll just hit on a couple of high notes here. In blue, you can see the two lab buildings sitting on top of a podium parking. That parking, of course, can't go underground due to the water table. And so we're working really hard to pull that parking far, far away from Shell Mount and 65th so that it's not a nuisance, really just towards frankly, the Ashby Avenue exit. Allowing the residential to then be opposite, residential to its south, really creating a complete street. Residents should look at other residents. And then the park position at that sunny southwest corner. You can also see the beginnings of the bike and pedestrian bridge that's been proposed. We know that that's out there ways, but we're trying to depict for the council members, for all of you, what this could look like. You're also seeing the residential to the north of this proposed development, masked up accurately. So hopefully this gives you a sense of how our project will fit into this broader context as it gets built out. Let's keep, perfect. This is the proposed public park. It was a tongue twister, at the southwest corner of the property. Again, at 51,000-plus square feet, it's a really big public park. It's fantastic. We think of it as a cousin or a sibling to the Christie Park, you know, the Whale Park, just to the south. You know, we got some great feedback as we were talking to both Parks and Rec and Bike-Ped Committee about how this park can help play a critical role in Emeryville's open space network. Ideas that were mentioned, Maru covered a lot of them, so maybe I'll just focus on the pavilion. One of the ideas that we had, that we wanted to bring to the table was, let's have an active use that provides, whether it's cafe, bike rental, maybe both of those things. Let's have an active use that really activates the plaza, public art, make sure there's something there. And it becomes a stepping stone as you're cycling to and from the waterfront or back into the city. It gives you a place to stop, sit in the sun. The plaza's to its east, so it's wind-sheltered. And we think this could be a really amazing active use, right, again, right at the terminus of Christie Avenue, right where you would expect it to be. Examples on the right, upper right is Fieldworks Brewery in San Mateo, a project that we worked on called Bay Meadows. If you haven't been there, you know, happy to give tours and check it out. It's an example of how these pavilions activate the public realm. Or maybe we want to tap into Emeryville's amazing industrial aesthetic. The lower right is Hayes Valley. It's Octavia Boulevard in San Francisco, again, where these pavilions or shipping containers are used to actually create flexible public space. In addition, there's a large green lawn to the left of the pavilion or to the west. And we want to make sure that that can satisfy, you know, flexible recreation. We've heard a lot about social interaction. Let's make sure there's lots of picnic tables, places to sit, potentially amphitheater for small events. We've also heard a lot about the importance of actually giving our multifamily community, folks who don't necessarily have a backyard per se, a place where their kids can learn how to ride a bicycle and hit a baseball and all the things, right? So let's make sure that this open space in its totality can really give back to our residents as our population's growing here in Emeryville. We can answer more questions during Q and A. Perfect. So this is an aerial view, now hovering over the interstate. The bike-ped shared path, another tongue twister, is in the front of the council member's screen. It's what connects you over to the left, towards Shell Mount, then connects over to 65th and back into the city. How the bridge and that connects, we know that that's TBD. But we want to make sure, again, that that park is positioned to receive however that ramp swings around and lands on our side of the freeway. Keep rolling. You know, this is where it gets, you know, quite interesting, as we start to think about our community and Emeryville's civic identity on the waterfront. We are, we know we play a critical role in the silhouette and the skyline of our city. We've put a lot of thought into that. In a lot of ways, this project represents the northern sort of bookend of the Emeryville civic waterfront. You know, the general plan, it talks about having a really imageable. So that means it's an image that really burns into your mind. And that could come in a lot of ways. One way, it's skyline, and that it's a memorable city. We know that that's our role in the skyline, and we've thought hard about the massing you're seeing on the screen to make sure that it's, yes, a great home for innovation and life sciences, but also just that its actual design, its muscularity, really invites the eye. You can see it shift throughout the day. The buildings actually curve and torque so that they're always changing in the light. So we've begun to think about the design. We're still at an early stage, but we know how important it is that this project have a proud bookend, like a sentinel at the end of the northern waterfront here. That's the massing. In terms of our overall bulk and height, we thought it might be helpful for the community and for the council members to see how our project, our proposed project, on the left. Green is the labs, yellow is residential, stacks up against height-wise some of the other just notable buildings along your waterfront. This is about compatibility, as Maru mentioned. We want to make sure that the bulk and mass of our development is compatible with surrounding uses. And as you can see, in many cases, we're shorter than a lot of the other development along the waterfront. And so we want to make sure we're a good contributor to this fabric. And then on the next slide, we just kind of take a walk around the project. Here, we're on the Ashby exit. We're up in the air just a little bit. You're starting to kind of come around the curve. Maybe you're about to take the exit. You can see how the building actually peels away. You know, it picks up light in different ways, which we think is really exciting. It also helps break down the mass of a building, so you don't just have a big wall facing one direction. You can see how that break-in plane actually diminishes the overall scale of the building as it's perceived. Also just makes it more interesting, more kinetic. On the next slide, we go a little bit closer and flip around. You can now see how the lab buildings reach towards the west, out towards the bay. They sit on their parking, again, oriented towards the highway, towards the Ashby off-ramp. You start to see how the two buildings begin to have a dialogue together. These are the two lab buildings now. And we think they can create an amazing space between them for the tenants of the building. But we need the buildings to kind of embrace, almost like, again, I'm using my hands that you can't see. Again, almost like, you know, a handshake to help shelter that open space on the podium from winds in the afternoon. On the next slide, okay, now we've decided to, I guess, take the Ashby Avenue exit. We're sweeping off to the right. You start to see the park, again, below the embankment, below the berm of the exit, right there greeting you, you know, welcome to our city. It's a stepping stone to our bay. You can see the residential building pulled back to the east. It's all open dream for that bike and pet bridge, one day, crossing over the highway, landing at Point Emory. So this is as if you just finished your walk or your jog or your cycle along the, along the Bay Trail. You're now coming back home to our city. The lab building actually turns away, greeting you in, right? Kind of, you see the park in the lower right, and then there's the residents with all their balconies kind of standing up there to the right. Again, the idea is to create a really welcoming open space, almost like it's reaching out to hug you right here at this corner. So this is what it would be like coming over that bridge, coming home. What an improvement we can do here on 65th. This is a biggie. The lower left, I think council members may have seen, I should have noted this. There's some photos from the existing vantage point, just to show you what it looks like today. I think we all know, 65th can definitely use some help. And it's such an important street. So we thought here is where we need to position the park, right at the confluence of the shared-use path that goes to the left, as well as the new bike lanes that our project will bring along 65th, kind of going off to the right towards the residents. And then there's the big park in the middle, just greeting you. We already have received some really great feedback from community members, as well as the Parks and Rec Committee, about how these two paths should come together, that there might be a geometry a little bit better than what you're seeing on the screens. But we're already thinking about ways to actually make this even more connected and even safer for pedestrians and cyclists. But this depicts the scene of what happens when all these things converge, as Peter said. And then look and feel, and then I promise we'll wrap up. What an incredible palette we have to choose from here in Emeryville. We've got a real, like, longstanding commitment to public art. We think this plaza is a perfect place to celebrate our culture, local artisans, local artists. Imagine along 65th, right at the end of Christie, you really want to see something there. Also, our industrial aesthetic. How do you bring together cutting-edge life-science, but also with a ground plane, maybe the first level or a few levels of the building that really feels like Emeryville? So we've got this rich masonry heritage to pull from. But on the next slide, we've also got highly sustainable architectural systems and languages that we can bring in and pair together. Imagine in architecture, we're quite excited about this, where the base of the building has one aesthetic that really feels human-scale. You can relate to it as a pedestrian. Rising above, you know, this is about bringing cutting-edge, next-generation life-science to Emeryville, and the building should speak to that. So we're thinking about a lot of variety and diversity in their architectural palette. And then finally, with the landscape, these parks, these streetscapes, that shared-use path, so many opportunities to involve native plants, water-tolerant plantings, thinking about ways of reusing, reusing water with the city, creating an open space that's not only vibrant, but also very, very sustainable. It also feels right in Emeryville. But we know this is kind of a tough environment. Can be, you know, can get its fair share of wind. We know we want it in the sun. So we're gonna pick the right kinds of plants that can really help shelter the park, make it comfortable, and also thrive in that environment. We have a lot of experience with that. And then that really comes down to vibrancy. I thought we might just wrap up with some views. This is some drone photography that actually puts council members up at, well, I think this one's 190 feet, so what would it be like from the top floors of the residence? Looking in all directions, breathtaking. You know your city. You know your waterfront. It's just incredible. The views in all directions. And while we've worked really hard to orient the residents perpendicular to the water, you know, as is kind of the, you know, the rule. The views to the water, the views to the south, the north, but also to the east Bay Hills are all remarkable. There won't be a bad unit. As we continue on to the next slide, this is from the two lab buildings that you saw before in 3D. And this is from around, about 200 feet in the air. And again, you know, you get amazing views to the north, where the blinds can stay open all the time, right? You know, you can just invite in all that diffuse light. And then on our other fronts, we've got incredible views to the south, sunrise, sunset. It's, it's a remarkable position. It's a really precious site. And then finally, as we go down to the next slide, and we also took some shots from the podium. So this is here about 50, 60 feet in the air. So you'd be on top of the parking between the two lab buildings. And what would you see? And it's, it's quite remarkable. You actually get to see down Christie Avenue on the lower-left photo. Lower right is out to the west. You can actually see the embankments I was referring to before as Ashby flies over. It, it's actually significant. The interstate's not as close as one might think, or at least I thought. Looking at Google Earth, the freeway actually pulls away thanks to the Ashby Avenue exit. So when we get up above that, we actually get some great views, but the noise thankfully is a little bit further away. And then finally, for my portion, one last view that we may refer to during Q and A, we may not. Now I'm gonna hand it back to my partner, Peter.
Thank you, Brian. Really helpful to get that presentation from you. I just want to thank the council again for the opportunity to present, present our plans. We really look forward to your feedback. We're very excited to be in Emeryville. We're committed to the city, to the community, and we, we welcome any questions and comments you have for us. So that includes our presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Brian and Peter. At this time, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if you have any clarifying questions on the presentation. All right. Oh, remember Medina, go ahead.
Yeah, I saw that you had like a bike lane sort of on an arrow. Do you have any pedestrian flows to show us? Because I saw like a potential car flow, but nothing pedestrians.
Yeah, you know, it, it, sorry, Diane, can I just answer a question? Okay, great. I realized that may be breaking procedure. I'll, I'll jump in and take that one. We don't have a circulation diagram for pedestrians per se yet, but I think that the one slide that showed the shared-use path, I think it's a, boy, I don't know which, which slide number this is. The site plan, I think, depicts pretty well how the major pedestrian routes along 65th, then up north on the shared-use path, and then the two driveways that circumnavigate through the site. We're thinking there'll be sidewalks along those as well. So that gives you an opportunity to potentially move diagonally across the site. We'll make sure in the future we have a diagram to show all that that I just described.
Very good. Yeah, we, we hope to see that in the, the PDP portion of the process. And Vice Mayor Donahue, you had your hand raised before you disappeared?
Yes. I would like to know whether the podium level for the laboratories would be open to the public? Or is it just open to the tenants?
You know, Vice Mayor, we don't, we don't yet know. We'd be, we'd be open to it. The thinking was the, the large park and everything at the ground plane would certainly be open to the public and TBD on the, the top of the podium. We, we expect that it will be most heavily utilized by the, the tenants above, given that you have to enter the building and, and take the elevators up. But we, we could explore open after the public as well.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions before we get to the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll check in with the clerk to see if anyone has submitted a speaker card. I do see one hand raised amongst the attendees.
No speaker cards, but yes, I, I see Tim Frank, so allow him to...
Yeah, great. Speaker, Tim Frank, go ahead and take three minutes. And I guess another hand after that as well.
Well, terrific. So I'm Tim Frank, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Alameda County Building and Construction Trades Council. And, you know, we're excited about this project. The physical design that you see is really quite impressive, and it's really a welcome treatment to a parcel that really, really invites some change, and it's a great opportunity. One thing I've noticed, that this, because of the size of the project, it'll actually be a dominant feature in the construction market of Emeryville throughout the construction phase. And we think that it's really important that they look at, you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, so it's really important to consider the quality of the construction work, and whether the jobs created are actually creating good union jobs. And if it is creating good union jobs, and we believe that it would be ideal to actually have an agreement, so that we're using apprentices from local apprenticeship programs and providing those folks a pathway to employment careers. And if we do that, it could actually be a substantial community benefit in itself. Just the construction itself could be a substantial community benefit, which we think would be deserving of credit. And we would like to see that actually happen. So this could be a tremendous benefit. And I realize it's really in the process, and we'd love to actually have a conversation with developers, and we think that there's an opportunity to do something great here.
Very good. Thank you, Speaker. We've got Glenn Lovall as well.
All right, go ahead, please.
Oh, yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Dean?
Hi there. Yes, my name's Glenn Lovall, political coordinator for Ironworkers Union Local 378, also speaking as an affiliated union of the Alameda County Building Trades Council. Largely echoing the comments of the previous speaker, Tim Frank, for Alameda Building Trades, I think there is also great tremendous potential in this project. It's mixed-use, it's smart development there. Fundamentally, when we're looking at the great potential of this project and the kinds of development that it can bring and the kind of revitalization in that area, echoing previous comments about the need for high labor standards on this project. Creating, of course, the appropriate standards, putting the appropriate standards in place for making these good, high-quality or high-road jobs is definitely critical. Setting these high labor standards, allowing these workers to have robust wages and benefits that are appropriate to this region, while of course inciting the virtuous cycle of equitable growth, in which workers are not only making at and beyond what it takes to live in this area, but of course spending the money locally and further stimulating the economy in the broader region. So it is equitable growth that we are speaking of here, of setting the appropriate standards, the pathways for local residents, the utilization of apprentices who have been through the world-class federal and state debt-free apprenticeship programs that set them on a very strong middle-class career path in the construction sector. Therefore, it would be optimal if discussions led to, of course, development of an agreement that governs this, such as a project labor agreement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Speaker. And seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this time. Colleagues, would you prefer that we each speak one at a time and address the one, two, three, four, five questions presented by staff? Or would you like to tackle each question one at a time? Does anyone have a preference?
I think each question one at a time.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. The first is mix of uses. Does the council feel that the proposed mix of uses is appropriate for this site? And again, we're looking at office and research and lab space and residential as well. Are folks feeling this is appropriate? Does anyone want to jump in? Vice Mayor Donahue?
I like the mix, assuming that there's some normal regulation about airborne toxic that all of our lab spaces fall under. You know, I'd like to hear some reassurance about that. And that by mixing residential and this large employment center, are we creating a problem with arena numbers by having so many more potential jobs than residential units is another question. Like, maybe if it's going to be a problem for our city in the future, should there be a little bit more housing? Just a question. Maybe not. Maybe it's not creating any arena issues. And of course, I love that this site could be complete. I love that the developer is integrating open space, parks, and the, how the place would be experienced for the users of the site, and also as a place for residents of our city to go to. That's all very appealing. And just, you know, that's, those are my comments about that.
Okay, very...
Use.
Very good. Member Bouders, do you want to weigh in on the mix of uses?
I find the mix of uses proposed acceptable.
Okay, member Medina?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to disclose that I had an ex parte communication with Glenn Lovall prior to this meeting, but it's so quickly prior that I don't have time to add it to my notes, so I forgot to say it at the top. So my apologies. And second of all...
I'm sorry, who was the ex parte communication with?
Lovall of steelworkers.
Steelworkers, very good. Local 378.
He's from the ironworkers.
Got it.
Listen, I don't know a lot about materials. I think irons and steel, I'm not super clear. So my follow-up would be that I agree with Councilmember Donahue that I would personally like to see more housing potentially in this mix. I'm curious if the developer has a rationale for why this proportion was chosen. I understand there's 144 units of housing and estimated 2,000 workers on this campus. I'm wondering like how they came to this ratio.
Brian or Peter, do you want to take us to have an answering that question before you move on?
Yes, certainly. So we, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I mean, so we, we see this site as, you know, vibrant and a mix, you know, mix of uses, like we talked about the life science, the residential, the community coming in. And there is a real need for life science space in the Bay Area and in Emeryville in particular. And we feel that this, this level of life science would meet the demand that's out there, as well as provide the level of critical ask to make the economic, the deal economically viable. And then on the housing front, we really pushed what we felt was feasible, given the amount of site to get to 144 units. So I think that it's good to get that feedback. We can look and see if there's an ability to add more housing. But we would like to see more proposed level of R and D to kind of be the minimum viable scale to justify the costs.
Okay, very good. So for question number one, my comments are actually, I independently came to that conclusion, that same conclusion as member Donahue and member Medina, wondering if there couldn't be more housing on this site. It's a good point that the Vice Mayor makes about the jobs-housing balance. And certainly, there is a market for the life sciences office space, but we're in a housing crisis. So this might be one of the few city councils that you would meet where you're going to have city council members clamoring for more housing at study session. So I would urge you to definitely look at that if there's, without hindering your plans for the life science part of the campus, if there's a way to increase the amount of housing on the site, I would definitely be in favor of that. But I do feel that this is an appropriate mix of uses for the site. So we'll move on to site planning. The question here is, does the council think that the location of the public park and the three towers and the proposed circulation is appropriate for the site? And I'll remind council that the developer did note that connecting the bike paths in the greater scheme of where people bike in the rest of the city was part of their rationale for placing the park on the west end. But how, are, is, are folks okay with that proposal? Because there was another suggestion of flipping the residential and public park coming from one of our committees. Member Medina?
Yeah, I don't feel like I have adequate information to make that finding, because I haven't seen a wind study that would say what amount of wind is coming on the park. I haven't seen an analysis of the flip proposals that we got from Planning Commission. And, I mean, I heard some description, but I haven't seen a bike pedestrian circulation plan.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Vice Mayor Donahue?
Given that the sun really doesn't matter, I think that having the park where it is really is important. Maybe there could be a little bit of a sound wall at the very corner. At the very corner of the park is 100 feet from the freeway. As the park becomes towards the pedestrian path, of course, it peels away from the freeway. So maybe some mixture of sound wall and vegetation could really make a difference for making the park more user-friendly in its full square footage. I feel like the other side of the freeway is that it does create airborne toxins, and that will diminish, of course, when we go to electric transportation. But still, we get to background airborne toxins from the freeway at about 500 feet, which would be about where that kiosk is. So, you know, that would be fine. A lot of people sitting down there would, wouldn't be sitting in a fog of freeway pollution. And it would also be, the air intakes for the residents would be background air pollution. So that would be good. So I tend to appreciate how the park is located where it is.
Very good. Member Bouders, do you have any comments on site planning?
Yeah, I partly agree with both of my colleagues so far. I feel like that there hasn't been enough information provided related to the circulation plan, which I will have a great deal of interest in. I thought that the proposed in-and-out of having deliveries come to the center of the structure, I think is a good concept. I just not, there's details missing for me to feel confident in it. And this is something I have, along with member Medina, been very interested in trying to address going forward with new construction. So I'm really interested in a future study session with a circulation plan that we can really have a conversation about. As to the park location, I applaud the interest in keeping solar access to the park. However, this is going to be adjacent to a freeway that has stagnant traffic. And so this park is going to be laden with diesel exhaust and stuff coming from the freeway. As member Donahue noted, the air will be really bad to breathe. It will be extremely loud. I don't think people will use a park like this as it's being proposed unless there was some sort of a sound wall or other construction barrier that actually separated the freeway. And in fact, there's potential problem for the greater neighborhood with this design, simply because right now there is a structure blocking most of that noise coming from the freeway. And this would actually open it to the rest of the neighborhood, and then you would actually have reverberation through this space. So I am open to the proposed location of the park for the reasons the applicant has made. But I seriously question the usability of a park without additional elements to it that would make it less noisy and cleaner. And there are certain types of coastal trees that suck up the types of particulate matter that come from emissions from vehicles better than other trees. And so I think that the landscaping choice for along the perimeter of this project will be really indicative of how serious they want this park to be an accessible and usable place. Other than that, just on the park, I think the kiosk idea is fantastic, something that could be used like an ice cream stand or cafe or something like that. I think that's a fantastic idea. I did see, I know it's early renderings, but I did think that the north part of the plaza had too much hardscape. And I think there needs to be a greater commitment to greening the space. Those are my comments on the park.
Very good. Thank you. And I will agree with my colleagues that more important than the exact placement of where the park is are the answers to what is going to happen with the sound, the wind, the circulation, and the impacts of particulate matter, both from exhaust and from tires on the freeway. So we look forward to that analysis at future meetings, and that will help determine the appropriateness of where everything is placed. And I'm glad that the, you folks have brought up that the initial bike path, that angle might be a little too, it's like, I see a hard angle in the plans where someone would have to make a really hard turn to stay on their bike. And I hope you're considering all of those as we move forward. Next up, we've got bonus points. Does the council have any preference as to how bonus points should be obtained at this early stage? And I'll remind council that the developer plans to earn some of their bonus points, I believe, by making a contribution to one of our funds. But they have community bonus points available to them that have not yet been identified. So is anyone, member Donahue, Vice Mayor Donahue, go ahead.
We have another site of about eight acres called the Sherwin-Williams site on the sort of south side of Emeryville. And as a part of that project, there is a separate van service to service West Oakland Bart. And it's not a part of the Emerygo round, but it's being provided by the developer. And it cuts a tremendous amount of time off of people commuting to the peninsula, or of the train lines that only go through West Oakland and head south. And maybe this could be, this van service could be integrated with your site and could run, you know, north, south to West Oakland Bart. And it would be a great benefit for people coming to work and/or leaving to go to work and commuting. Also, we might, by the end of tonight's meeting, have bonus points for cross-laminated timber construction that might be appropriate for the residential development. That could potentially be some bonus points that you might consider.
Very good. Colleagues, any other bonus point ideas at this stage for the developers? Nope?
Yeah, I would just say that I think there are a couple opportunities adjacent to this property to better fulfill some of the things that are trying to be accomplished here. So again, this comes back to kind of seeing a more refined circulation plan. But I'll put out there that member Medina and I at Transportation Committee have identified as future active transportation spaces in the city. We've talked about changing Lacoste Street into a, into a, like a fire lane with an adjacent bicycle pedestrian path. So that whole street that goes along the freeway, that doesn't really need to be there, is not, not a necessary street to the city that goes all the way down, almost to Christie Park. It could be a continuation of this bike path down to the heart of our city. And so I would just put out there special projects like that, that I think would better, there'd be a combination of parking and transportation. I would love to see the developer take out that street, so to speak, or modify it in a way that actually creates a separated bike ped path all the way down, not just on their project, but connects it to Christie Park. I think that would be, so I'm interested in flexible benefits, I guess, and looking at ways to have this project not be this isolated little node of active transit opportunities on it, but actually connect it to our grid.
Very good. Member Medina?
I fully agree with that. I think taking the advantage of the connectivity to the Ashby interchange for bikes and pedestrians, making that connectivity happen is one of the better things we can expect of this project. But yes, I'll support the plug for paying attention to our agenda item later for processing. But yes, I'll support the plug for paying attention to our agenda item later for cross-laminated timber construction.
Very good, and I'll agree with my colleagues that this part of Emeryville tends to be a bit of an island, and I look forward to the opportunity to connecting it to the rest of the city in a meaningful way that people can get to on foot, or on bike, or quad skate, however they wish, not in a car necessarily. That brings us to project design. Does anyone have any specific design notes that they would like to share? Member Bauders?
Thank you. I thought it was interesting that the applicant's presentation, they used the quote, "Residents should look at other residents," yet they're building this huge tower on a podium right next to the Nady Building, and when you look at it every, in every viewpoint you sent us, it's going to tower over this residential neighbor that you're going to have just to the north. So I would just make that observation first, is that I, I think you should think about how you're going to integrate with your neighbors to the north, given what you said. I've already spoken about the park space. I really think the circulation plan and greater connectivity is key. I think the parking total is really high, and I understand, you know, there is going to be a lot of proposed lab space here. I would really start looking at how you can save money by also eliminating some of this parking, and I think a more robust, there wasn't any TDM proposed, but I think having a robust TDM is more in line with the values of the city council and the city in terms of doing something that integrates with our vision of ourselves as a livable city where cars aren't the preferred method of moving around. And then I just want to actually note to the two public speakers who came, to Tim and to Greg, that there is a, I did request months ago, a future agenda item that the council all agreed to have, which is a study session about a citywide PLA. So I would just share that with the applicant now, that the council is in discussions, is going to be in discussions about its future interest in that item, and we don't have a presentation on that yet, but I just want to remind everybody that that's out there.
Very, very good, thank you. Member Medina?
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with the need to delve down on that circulation plan and come up with viable transportation alternatives for this area, especially because it's going to be connected to a new bike and pedestrian bridge. It seems like quite an opportunity. And perhaps to incorporate some Emery Go-Round or other public transit options, but also to really deliver us, when you come back with that circulation plan, very clear loading and unloading cells. We have other areas of the city that have biotech, where we have daily problems with loading and unloading of biohazardous substances that require very specific kind of trucks, very specific kind of entrances, and, I mean, are very just difficult to move. This is one of the bigger logistical problems with having a biotech-rich city, and I'm going to expect, because in the past, I don't think it has been enough of a consideration, I'm going to expect a very high level of detail of exactly how that will be handled. In addition, for the residential building, what we're going to need to see is loading and unloading for deliveries, as well as Uber and Lyft. I live in a 50-unit live workspace here, and we have deliveries hourly outside. So if you've got a minimum of three times as many units, you are going to have a significant need for how, where delivery is going to be going, and have that not conflict with that bike pedestrian circulation plan. And so that kind of very clear, how will this not become another cluster of like mixing uses that we then have to expend police resources to constantly monitor, is something I'm really going to expect from this applicant.
Thank you, member Medina. Vice Mayor Donahue, do you have any design requests that you'd like to share?
I like the basic structure, that the towers have angles that are not just rectangles, but create visual interest, and the, the way the architecture sort of cups around the podium, I think is exciting for our city. So I, I laud the architectural concept of making distinctive architecture that could be kind of great. Yes, maybe the Nady future project should be further north on its site. You should kind of deal with the Nady project, so you're not creating some kind of dark alleyway, even though you do have a service road in between you and Nady that seems good to keep, you're not right on the proper line. So those are my only comments about design.
Very good, thank you, Vice Mayor Donahue. I will agree that I do think the lab space is thoughtfully presented, and I'm hoping that the next version of the residential space has as much interest and attention to detail as I see from the lab space. At the moment, I will say it does look like an afterthought that was dropped onto the plans afterwards. And just to reiterate what was discussed before, you know, I would like to see more housing to bring this project into balance. I would like to see a thoughtful connection between the residential area and the public park. I know that that, that can come in another phase, but at the moment, I'm not seeing it. I wholeheartedly agree with member Medina that loading is something that is extremely important, that has not necessarily been as well thought out in past projects with regard to what loading looks like today. So this is not a community that will welcome trucks, parking, and bike lanes. We are really moving away from that being a standard, and we really prioritize our residents who use active transport, people on foot, and people who are using those modes. So I will, I'll echo what member Bauders said, and say that a TDM really would be important for this project. I also want to make a pitch for bicycle parking at the park, not just for the residential and the business uses, but for people who are going to actually stop at the park. And I'm really appreciative that you're looking at Christie Park, because that's an example of a park that was previously a park, but was an unsuccessful park. And the changes that were made to the new iteration of Christie Park has made it a very successful gathering place, where on paper, it was kind of similar before. It had a little gathering space, and it had stepped, a little stepped-up area where, you know, people could gather and have performances or eat lunch, but it was not used. So I would really look closely at what they did with that park by having a really high-class feature for children to play on, which is the whale, and having berms, which makes a huge difference, for some reason, for people wanting to be there and use that space. I also want to make a pitch for a bathroom at that park as well, that the public is able to use, because I think that if you really want people to come there and really use the space, I think that is something that folks expect from first-class amenities. So the final question we have tonight is, does the council feel that the required findings for a PUD/PDP can be made? Does anyone, let's put it this way, does anyone not feel that the findings for a PUD/PDP can be made? Member Bauders?
At this time, there's not enough information, so items four and five on the list of findings. I don't suppose that I couldn't make them at some point, but at this point, there's inadequate information, so I would not be able to make the findings at this time.
Very good. Member Medina?
I agree, and my final note of feedback that's not design-related is that I would encourage the applicant to reach out to local stakeholders within the building trades community, not just wait and see if we're going to do a PLA, and make sure that you have community input on those issues as well, before coming back to us.
Vice Mayor Donahue, did you want to give an answer on the findings question?
Well, I concur about, you know, looking at our transit demand for that site, and I laud the general concept of having a loading and unloading within the project, but yes, making sure that we don't have those problems of our biotech specialty trucks causing us great difficulty in our surrounding streets, and just nailing that down. So it seems like we can reach those findings in the near future.
And I'm with you, Vice Mayor Donahue. I think we are, we're moving in the right direction to make these findings, and I'm sure that the developer will take into account all of our comments tonight, and I'd like to just echo member Medina's request that the developer do proactively get in touch with our local building trades and start having those conversations about the production of this development. So with that, I will ask if the developers have any clarifying questions for council that we can answer for you before we go ahead and close the study session.
I don't think any questions at this time, no. We appreciate your, your time and your feedback is very helpful. We will take all your feedback into account as we look to refine the plan, and also to understand the feasibility of the development with proposed modifications versus continuing with the conversion of the facility. So thank you, we really appreciate it.
Very good, thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and conclude this special study session, and the time is 6:30, 6:00 PM. I'll just go ahead and allow our clerk to...